Folks, if I could have your attention, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting together for December 19th, 2022. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman of the Planning Commission, and if you would, join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. And with that, before we get started, I would like to get staff sworn in this morning. Sadgar, if you would.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Great. And with that, Commissioners, you should have copies of our minutes from our October 25th meeting. If we could, like to get a motion and a second. Okay, Mr. Hefling moves that we approve the minutes. Do we have a second? Mr. Douglas, seconds. Now, any additions or corrections that we need to make to our minutes from our October 25th meeting? The additions or corrections? Yes, Ms. Jones?
I just have a minor spelling change on page three of five, under number three. It's about the fifth line down, it says mute to point, that correcting of moot and point need to be spelled.
Okay, all right, we'll correct that. Any addition corrections, any additions or other corrections? Okay, seen none. All those approving the minutes from our October 25th meeting as corrected, signified by saying aye. All opposed, no. Okay, minutes have been approved. And before we get started this morning, I'd like to announce that we have a new employee in the Planning Commission office, Brian Fogel. Commissioners, I know some of you that have been here a while will remember when he was here the last time, and he has gone off and worked at Jefferson Dell, I think. And so anyway, he's going to be our new Assistant Director downstairs, and he couldn't, he's downstairs, we're shorthanded this morning in the office, and so he's having to man the office this morning. But when you see him, we're just welcoming him back to the Commission and look, you know, I'm sure everybody will look forward to working with him. So just wanted to make that announcement. If we could, I guess, our first docket item, or only docket item today, Ms. Edgar, if you could, let's read that docket, please.
Docket PZ22024. Application has been filed by Canfield Realty Group for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plan, 155 lots, to be known as Paramount Estates. The property is located on 150.11 acres in the 12300 block of West Highway 42, Prospect. The current zoning is R1 residential and CO1 conservation slash residential.
All right, thank you. And with that, Mr. Fisher, if you would, introduce the docket for the Commissioners.
Thank you, good morning. Ryan Fisher, Oldham County Planning and Development Senior Planner, 100 West Jefferson Street, LaGrange. So as Ms. Edgar stated, application has been filed by Canfield Realty Group for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plan, 155 lots, to be known as Paramount Estates. Property is located on 150.11 acres in the 12300 block of West Highway 42 in Prospect. Current zoning is R1 residential, CO1 conservation, a little bit, there's a little bit of ag in that general area, so you'll see that in a second. So the site information, once again, we're looking at 12300 block of West Highway 42, right in that area of North Oldham High School, 1793, and West Highway 42. Existing zoning being R1 residential. It's undeveloped at this time and 150.11 acres. So a little bit of the site history, going back to that first section of Paramount Estates. On August 25th, 1987, the Oldham County Planning Commission recommended approval to Oldham County Fiscal Court for a zoning map amendment from AG1 to R1 for a 250-acre tract to be known as Paramount Estates. On August 25th, 1987, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved the preliminary plan for a proposed subdivision. That was 302 single-family lots on 418.5 total acres of land. This was pending approval of the zoning map amendment at Oldham County Fiscal Court. Both of those motions were approved with one abstention. And then the zoning map amendment for Paramount Estates was eventually approved by Oldham County Fiscal Court on October 6th, 1987. A little bit of the case history for this project, the pre-application meeting, we held back at September 13th. Neighborhood meeting was held October 18th, we had a technical review committee meeting on October 19th. And then adjoining property owners notices were mailed out for this case on the 7th of December. You will see real quickly that the Oldham era, there isn't a date on there, so due to an editor's error, that was actually not published. Two Board of Adjustments cases were published in there. But with the notification statute, because of our online notification being on our website, that suffices when there's a newspaper error. So I just wanted to make a quick note about that. So here is the overview of where we're looking at the property. Once again, North Oldham High School directly across the street, we've got the 1793 West Highway 42 intersection right here. Our zoning area, once again, most of this development will be within this R1 area. The applicant will touch on here in a little bit, this little area right here that is zoned CO1. Future land use map predicts that the use of this tract will be single-family residential subdivision. So the applicant is proposing a preliminary subdivision plan comprised of 155 lots on 150.11 acres to be known as Paramount Estates. R1 allows a maximum density of 2.17 dwelling units per acre and a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 100 feet. Open space is not required. The proposed density of this development is 1.19 dwelling units per acre and meets the minimum lot width and lot size requirements. Plan also reflects 31.49 acres of open space. Traffic timback study was prepared by Diane Zimmerman, Traffic Engineering. Evaluated the traffic impacts of the development upon adjacent highway systems. The impact area according to the study are defined to be the intersections of US Highway 42 with the access drive to North Oldham School Campus, post office area 1793, Paramount Way, and then Lock Lane and Mayo Lane. You will hear more about that from the applicant as well as Jim Silliman. The development will be on sewers and Paramount Services Association has authorized capacity for 155 single-family homes. And there was a letter attached in your packet behind, I believe, the TRC notes. Here's just a couple of plans that were provided by the applicant showing the development. You have the full-size copies that were provided with you as well. Just a few pictures, if you still to this point don't know where we're at here. 1793, US 42, looking directly across to the development, which will be very far back there in the rear. And then these are a couple pictures back in that area where I talked about, where there's the CO1 area that the applicant will probably touch on. These are some pictures back in that general area, so once again, you're just really getting a good look at some open field right now. So in summary, the applicant's requesting approval of a preliminary subdivision plan for 155 lots on approximately 150.11 acres to be known as Paramount Estates. Planning Commission may add additional binding elements at the public hearing. And potential binding elements for you, this approval applies only to the plans presented here at this December 19th, 2022 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. There shall be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. The cumulative phasing plan shall limit the number of dwelling units to 35 per year, beginning with the first record plat. Phase one of the development shall include that roadway connection to the intersection at US 42 and Kentucky 1793 to eliminate any alleviate any sort of traffic concerns that we have with getting out of the existing Paramount Estates. And then number five, the preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of construction plan approval. And with that, that concludes what I have.
All righty, Mr. Fisher, thank you. And Mr. Silliman, County Engineer, I'd like to present your issues, sir.
Good morning, Jim Silliman, County Engineer, 100 West Jefferson Street, LaGrange, Kentucky. And we've reviewed, or I've reviewed, the plans dated October 28th, 2022, and the traffic study that was provided also in November 22. Some of the comments from the technical review committee review that you've received still apply. I'm going to focus some of them of more concern or matter. We did observe the blue line streams, detailed them on this plan, they're the blue lines. And we'll request or require that when the applicant provides the construction plans for approval of our stormwater quality management erosion control permit, they address the three inline detention basins, which are circled here as proposed, with appropriate permitting or correspondence from the Army Corps of Engineers and Division of Water. There's also circled in red, three roadway crossings of that blue line stream. This can be handled with those permits and correspondence, I just wanted to make it clear that that needs to be done. There was, in the TRC review notes that are in your packet, we had made some comments about development in the AG1 zoning. Of course, that's been removed from this, so those comments no longer apply. We received some comments from local residents of the Paramount Estates section, existing section regarding some stormwater concerns. One of these is, there were three lots that were proposed in the TRC review packet with the basin located here. With the plans you have in front of you, the three lots were changed into two lots of larger size and the basin adjusted. That was obviously to accommodate the requirements of the CO1 zoning. I understand the applicant has been coordinating or discussing with the owner that was concerned about this change. From the engineering department's standpoint, either option works for us, so I'll let them address that further. But we would look at this in the construction design phase. And again, either works, because they will, in accordance with the Oldham County's stormwater runoff ordinance, address the runoff from these sites and the development, so that the detention basin handles the two 10 and 100-year rain events. Similarly, there was one of the five detention basins that also abuts Paramount Estates existing lots. This one, the owner was concerned, again, about the runoff. There are actually existing easements in these existing lots or across and behind the existing lots. So we would just require that when the applicant provides their construction drawings, that they show that the discharge from this basin is adequately accommodated by those existing easements. A little difficult to see this one, it's from the crowd, but just for everyone's reference, we're aware of there are several or a few projects in the area, KYTC and other that are planned, and if you have any questions on how they might affect that or this future development, I wanted to outline those. First is the North Oldham Campus. KYTC is in development of a plan to add turn lanes for the campus at two intersections. And also what are called RRFBs or rectangular rapid flashing beacons, they're basically pedestrian signals that are self-actuated at crosswalks. So there'll be crosswalks added at these two intersections. That's a, they're in the utility phase of that right now, I believe the gas was relocating. So that's very soon to be constructed. We're also aware of the library site, when this library is constructed, they will modify the traffic signal at US 42 and 1793, make adjustments to that. I think that's obviously important, because as Ryan mentioned, the connection from this proposed Paramount subdivision connects to that signal. Lastly, is a widening of US 42. It's been a long-going project, and just for everyone's reference, in case you didn't know where that one ends, it actually stops about a mile and a half south of the development. Just a minute, I'll get into the traffic study a little bit more in our review of that, but one intersection of concern is Lock Lane. And I want to recognize that while it's a concern for future development, it's also a concern now. So I think as you've seen in some previous Plan Commission hearings, we've talked about skewed intersections. KYTC identifies that, of course, a 90-degree intersection is ideal between 75 and 90s, preferable 60 minimum. This intersection is actually at a 50-degree skew, so it's less than ideal. There's also crest vertical curve as you look to the south, about 350 feet south of Lock Lane, which is less than the desirable intersection site distance of 430 feet. So we do have some existing conditions there to deal with. Luckily, it's relatively lower volume at that intersection, but they are there. This is an exhibit from the traffic study that Ms. Zimmerman provided. It's the level of service analysis. If you look at this, we talked about the traffic signal that's going to be improved with the library site. And one benefit of this project is that by connecting to the traffic signal, it's able to redirect traffic from the existing Paramount Way intersection to the traffic signal, which improves these, in this green block, it improves the level of service at that intersection. I've received a few calls over the past few years from residents at Paramount Estates concerned about that intersection and requesting a traffic signal. KYTC is advised that they do not find that it meets the warrants for a traffic signal, so they don't plan on putting a traffic signal at the existing intersection of Paramount Way. So again, this connection to the signal at 1793 is a benefit for that flow. The concern, again, here is at Lock Lane, we do see with just normal growth in this no-build column, the delay time increases significantly. However, it increases even more, it's exacerbated by the development. So there is, and there's a similar exacerbation of that delay at Lock Lane, I'm sorry, at Mayo Lane, which is opposite Lock Lane, but it's less. I just wanted to point out that this is a unique development in that we see both negative impacts, but also some positive impacts from the construction. This exhibit's just the traffic flow. It's interesting to see while we're looking at the trips that are generated by the site, really, the delay times need to be considered with respect to the overall volumes. The conclusion in that report stated that the analysis demonstrates that Lock Lane intersection is capacity deficient. This condition could be improved by constructing a left turn lane on US 42. I provided the report to the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for their review, and their response was, and this is an excerpt from it, "As far as Lock Lane is concerned, we support the idea of Oldham County requiring improvements to address the capacity issue. We would prefer that there not be a left turn lane constructed on US 42 itself, as stated within the TIS. We would, however, be agreeable to a left turn lane from Lock Lane on US 42. KYTC will not be requiring any improvements to the affected state routes at this time." So through this discussion, while we've observed that there are some issues, we understand that the development is not solely attributable to those. It is some existing conditions and some future growth anyway. But they are going to, the applicant's going to expand on a proposal to address that. Brian mentioned this, this is basically the connection to the future library site and where it improved, and the road improvements at the signal. We're proposing a, recommending a binding element that states that this connection be included in the first phase of construction, and that allows that traffic signal to benefit the overall development and the existing development. Lastly, just to, I guess, be clear, when I was looking at the plans, it was unclear to me where sidewalks were being planned. The typical section has sidewalks on all the roads, but if you look at the plan view, the courts did not. Oldham County subdivision regulations would not require sidewalks on these parcels based on the width and the fact that they're in the unincorporated county. However, after further explanation or clarification from the applicant, there will be sidewalks on all the main roads as shown, and these four courts circled green will also receive sidewalks. The two small courts that serve four or five lots do not have sidewalks planned. That's it.
Mr. Silliman, thank you. Commissioners, we'll now open it up for questions by the Commission. Any questions for the staff? Any questions? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I can ask a applicant this, but on one of the slides you showed where there was concern on that last detention basin that connects to other properties, and you said when you review the plans, the stormwater quality plans that they submit, are there existing stormwater facilities on the other lots that are already developed?
So this is the existing Paramount Estate lots?
Yes.
You have the record plat, and I noted here, there are multiple easements along the back of the lots and between a few of them. They range in size from 15 to 20 to variable easements. So I don't think there are subsurface, there's not subsurface improvements to carry those, but ditches or other could be provided if necessary. And again, that would have to be addressed in the construction plan phase. But ideally, if the basins are designed to operate as they should, and they will be, then the post-development runoff should not exceed the current runoff, and therefore, they would be able to handle that flow anyway.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Yes, sir, Mr. Hefling. Is your mic on?
So...
Will be sidewalks, except for there's two cul-de-sacs, I think you said there won't be.
That's correct. These two small cul-de-sacs circled in orange, those will not.
Okay, Sam, did I see your hand? Nope, okay. Anybody else have questions for staff? Okay, seen none. We'll now move into the presentation by the applicant or representatives and others in support of the application. Mr. Talbot, I assume that would be you? And if you have folks that would be speaking on behalf of this application, let's go ahead and get them sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your all's time. We have our entire team here. We have Steve from Canfield Development, Kevin and Chad from Land Design and Development, and also Diane Zimmerman here to answer any questions. Ryan and Jim, thank you very much for your all's presentation. It was very thorough. And what I would like to do is, I'm going to go through our presentation relatively quickly in interest of your all's time. And obviously, if you'll have questions, we'll hit on some of the finer points that need to be addressed. The first thing I do want to make sure is emphasized is that this is not a rezoning. This is simply a subdivision plan. As Ryan mentioned, this was rezoned back in 1987, so some time ago. There is a small area, a very small area of CO that is CO1. We will be coming back for rezoning to basically be able to convert two lots into three, but that is not an issue today. I just want to point that out, and I want to point it out for a couple reasons. In terms of the rezoning that was approved and that we're now under on our subdivision plan, this land has been identified as appropriate for single-family development for lots on sewers under one acre. The regulations state that we are not required to provide any additional consideration or concessions in that type of situation. So in addition, that would be true even if it were a rezoning. Since it is not, we're not required to do that. As you have probably noticed with a lot of the clients and plans that we bring up, in that situation, we still want to be very good neighbors and good developers, in an interest of your all's county, we still do want to make concessions, and we do. In this case, a couple things, we're not required to have any open space. So we are providing a significant amount of open space out of 150 some odd acres, we're going to have over 30 acres of open space. Out of 150 some-odd acres, we're going to have over 30 acres of open space. And that's significant, particularly when you consider the fact that our density is allowed to go over 2 to 2.17, yet our density is going to be basically 1, and that's even with the open space. So the size of our lots and the density is very much in keeping of Oldham County, your all's desires and goals to have appropriate development that respect the, all sorts of things that you'll have in interest, including roads, the character of your all's developments, and so forth. Additionally, we're not required to have any buffering with the developments, the residential developments that we're near. Despite that, Mr. Canfield is going to have screening with the development behind us with Kevin Young. He'll work with Land Design and Development with the landscaping plan to provide screening where it is necessary. And lastly, one of the things that Jim Solomon was really hitting on in detail is road conditions. Subdivision plans, when there's no waivers or variances and you're compliant with all the regulations, which ours is by law, not just your regulations, but by state law, you're allowed to be approved by right. And despite that, we are making a very significant contribution to the road, future road improvements, particularly that will be applied to the Lock Lane intersection, and you'll see that in our binding element. We're going to contribute $50,000, and the terms of that is that it will be granted when we go to record plat. That's when it will be paid into fiscal court. And so we're going to be providing that. So those are all significant concessions and additions to our development that are not required. Now, I will say, when we come back for a very, very tiny rezoning, I hope you all will keep that in mind, because that, the road improvement contribution is going to be really significant. We hope we, hopefully, we don't get asked again for that very small development. I think you'll see the address, and so I'll flip down to the next slide. This shows the rezoning, I'm sorry, this shows the zoning right now. You see the AG1, and then you see the R2. When we came for our neighborhood meeting, we did on our original plan, had some lots in the AG1. All of those have been approved, removed, and so we are now exclusively on the R1, except for that very small portion on the CO2. This shows the aerial with our development plan in the area, and hopefully you all saw, we're very familiar with that from Ryan and Jim Solomon's presentation. But you'll see, we have multiple entrances off of 42. We're going to actually be increasing the entrances and access to 42 from the current subdivision of Paramount behind us. This shows that the future land use map. Again, this has already been designated as appropriate for single-family future subdivision. And again, this is a slide you're probably familiar with. Proposed land uses that are assigned general appropriateness level are generally allowed without any additional requirements or conditions. In fact, one thing I will mention in your all's subdivision regulations, 3.3, for this type of application, we're not even required to have a hearing. Your own regulations state in this type of situation, it could be done without a hearing. So that's how appropriate this subdivision, this plan is. This shows the roadside. This is 1793, looking across 42 towards our site. You can see the curb cut somewhat put on the property. This is looking north up Highway 42. Our site is on the right. Apology for the, kind of, the darkness of these pictures. This is looking south. The site is now on our left. This is one of the better intersections, obviously, that you'll have on US 42. It's signalized, and it's very robust, can handle this development. This is our development plan. As Jim mentioned, we've got sidewalks nearly everywhere. We have them everywhere that is required. Also, in terms of Jim's comment or request that we agree to that connection at the future public library in Phase 1, we are agreeable to doing that. I did not have time to get that on my slides for the day, but we are agreeable to a binding element to have that done at the Phase 1, the time we go to Phase 1 on this project. This shows our previous plan that was shown at TRC. I think we actually fixed that at TRC, but that showed our prior plan when we had 170 lots and some in the AG1. As you can see on the right, you can see it's been reduced by 255 lots. So it is all in the R1, except for the CO1 that was on the very back. This shows just some comparison, our prior plan, 170 lots, we're now 155 lots. Our gross density was 1.75, and the gross density is now just over 1. Again, for R1 zoning, you can have 2.17 density, so we're well below that. And then there's, we show the specifics on our open space of 31 and a half acres. This is the area that we will be coming back for. Again, this is just so we, we don't want to be in a position where we're, there's a perception that there's any change in the plan that we were trying to hide. We are, this is, there are two lots here, because you can see where the jagged dotted line is. That's where you get the CO1 zoning, and so we have to have larger lots there. We can only get two lots in that space. We are in discussions with the neighbors that we would be impacting, and when we come forward, I'm fairly confident we'll be doing that with their agreement and acquiescence to our plans. But what we want to do is rezone that small little area to allow us to have three lots. Right now, those two, they really don't, they're not consistent with the other lots. I think they're going to look a little funny, and so we will be coming back for the very small rezoning and to amend this plan to accommodate that. This is Option 1, and then that's Option 2. So one of those will be the ones that we come forward with. Again, Option 1, but I'm pretty sure Option 2 is what our preferred plan is, to come forward with three lots to make them in keeping. All of these lots are in the area of about half an acre, give or take. That's the approximate size of them. This is the style of homes. You can see they're very top-quality. Mr. Canfield has done a lot of developments in our community. In addition to development, I think it was, what was the, Steve, what was the development that you had in Oldham County? Poplar Woods. Poplar Woods is a development he has done already in Oldham County. These are going to be very high-level, exquisite homes, very nice, and we feel very appropriate for the area. And that is our development plan. And lastly, this is the binding element that we had gotten prepared before today, and it says, "The applicant shall contribute $50,000 towards off-site road improvements for traffic infrastructure impacted by the development, including Lock Lane, which shall be payable to the Oldham County Fiscal Court and due at the time of record plat." So with that, we will reserve the rest of our time for questions and rebuttal. Thank you very much for our time, and we've got our whole team available to answer any questions you all may have.
All righty, Mr. Talbot, thank you. With that, so that completes your application at this point, then, correct?
Yes, it does.
All right. We said I'd like to ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application at this time? Anyone that would like to speak in support of? Yes, sir? Need to get him sworn in. Get you sworn in, and then with your name and address for the record.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Name and address.
Dan Perkins, 6244 Oldham Grange Road. I'm with Mason Construction and Development.
Okay.
Just like to say that in this area, we have completely run out, I'm a residential builder here in Oldham County, we've completely run out of lots in the north section of Oldham County. I just think it'd be a great thing for the county to improve. Builders are scratching right now for lots. They can't find lots to build on. Brentwood, we're currently in there, running out of lots. The lower development's going to be probably a couple years before we even get lots on the ground where we can start building in there. I just think there's a great need, so we should consider it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. All right. Anyone else that would like to speak in support of this application? Okay, seen no one. We'll now move into testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Anybody like to speak either in opposition or have questions of this application? Yes, sir? Is there anybody else that's here that would like, that plans on speaking in opposition? If there is, I'd like to get everybody sworn in at one time, and then we'll get your name and address for the record. Yes, sir, just go ahead and stand up. Ms. Edgar?
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay. Whoever would like to go first, and we'll get your name and address for the record.
My name is Greg Rising. I live at 11616 Paramount Way in Prospect, Illinois. I work here locally, and my wife is also a schoolteacher at North Oldham, and we enjoy all that the county and the area has to offer us. Specifically, the portion of the presentation that I want to speak to is in regards to the property that is on CO1, which is near my residence as well as several others. And just would appreciate your understanding in that we have been working together to try to make sure that we can come to an appropriate resolution on the best layout for the land that is back there. And the presentation, as it is shown, currently has the retention pond in an area that we express concern in local meetings with Mr. Canfield and his engineering team. And it is a drawing that you had seen. I'll show it underneath the screen.
Oh, okay. All right.
The area that you see up on the screen is an original design that was shown in the layout today, and you'll see that the detention pond in its current location cuts deep into the natural landscape behind the property that exists currently, which is the home that I reside in, and then some of the other neighbors that are here reside in that same general area. The area here is sloped about 20 feet from the top of that detention pond down to the bottom, so I'm concerned about the initial location of the detention pond. With respect to the options that were shown in the application, we are interested in working through these options. We think it provides better drainage and a better layout for the area, and also reflects the low point of where the water currently drains through that area during heavy rains. Whether, whether the drawing shown above here, which is currently conforming to the CO1 zoning, or the drawing that I will show next, which is a possible minor zoning adjustment, which we understand the reason for that and the logical nature of having the houses all consistent in that corner. The primary interest I have in this area is that the detention pond is located in the correct location to make sure that it aids in the proper drainage.
Okay.
I would ask that, as the committee reviews this application, if it chooses to approve it, that I consider the location of that detention basin as part of the important parts of approving this application if they choose to do so.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rising. All right. Next gentleman here, I'll get you, as last time, the name and address for the record, please.
Millett 1162 on Paramount Way.
What's your last name?
Millett, M-I-L-L-E-T-T-E. I'd written an email, I'm not sure if you all received it. And it's not really an opposition, just, I guess, a request and a hope. We're at the very end of Paramount Way, second from the end on the left. And the original design that we received and went over with the TRC did not, basically a cul-de-sac was added in what was proposed as a green space. And we just asked that if there's a way to find another spot for those four houses. We, you know, one of the many reasons we moved here specifically to this neighborhood is, you know, the fields and the amazing property, and we just asked that if there's any way to keep that one little section of additional green space, we would really appreciate You want me to point it out? It's 140...
Please.
Close to where the retention pond is. It's where lots 49 through 52 are going.
Could you put it on the screen there? Just lay it down on, yeah, there you go. Okay?
Little cul-de-sac that's going in there. The only other green space I see in the design is over here, and it, you know, again, just a request that it's a beautiful little piece of property, and we would love for that to stay green space. Can I pass over the email? I sent an email, I'm not sure if you all received it.
Sure. Ms. Edgar, Ms. Edgar.
I'll put it in.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that has testimony or questions opposing the application? Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Okay. Seen none. We'll now open it up for questions of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or the folks that have spoken in opposition? Mistress Finney.
Have a question for Diane Zimmerman.
Good morning, Diane Zimmerman, 12803 High Meadows Pike, Prospect 40059.
Morning. The numbers that you gave us here on the US 42 Lock Lane, Mayo Lane, you're going to get the peak hour level service on page eight. At the eastbound, westbound level service, was this, is this like at school hour?
Yes.
All right, is this, and this is at, this is at build-out?
Correct.
Take into consideration the additional traffic that will come from the Oldham County section of Norton Commons and the Sanctuary Falls by the time they're built out in 2027?
I applied a growth rate of 1% to get to the future traffic. I did not do a detailed analysis as to whether or not it specifically counts for all of the lots and the school traffic that could be generated by those two developments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions from commissioners? Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas.
I'm looking for the engineer for the applicant's site. One of my questions is, is that on the proposed detention basin number five, there is, I believe there's, is that an exit catch basin coming out of that for runoff?
Or you start? Let's get your name and address, please.
Engineering manager for Land Design and Development, 503 Washburn, Louisville. Basin number five being the one that we've been talking about most specifically.
Yes, sir.
Can you put that on the screen there? Go ahead, Mr. Douglas.
I was asking, is that where the catch basin, where it's located, on your particular one doesn't show it, but on mine it shows it, and I'm sure the other members have it too, where there's a catch basin?
Yes, I think what we're both talking about is at this location right here.
Mr. Solomon, if you want to...
The outlet structure?
On the basin.
On the basin itself? I'm wanting to know what the slope is and where that's going to drain out to on the next property. Because I don't see on your diagram, and I know Mr. Solomon will get to that when the stormwater quality management plan is done by you guys, when you submit it during construction. But for me, I want to know what the runoff is onto that property next door.
With the detention basin, it'll be less than what's there now.
Are you just terminating it? How are you going to exist it? I mean, I don't care how the engineer, either one of you can answer this, but we've had subdivisions before, so I'm just wanting to make sure that it's adequate flow coming out of there.
Yes. The flow, the detention basin will reduce the flow that's existing, and the water that's coming into it will reduce to what's less than what's going to it now. We're required to discharge the flow at least 15 feet away from our property line, not to impact the existing property downstream.
The answer I'm looking for. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, commissioners? Yes, sir, Mr. Talby.
Could you just give me a clarification on that 50,000?
Could you just give me a clarification on that $50,000 that you're gonna contribute to Lock Lane, how that's gonna be handled? For the library connection?
It's gonna, well, it, the, the way we've written it is that it's general, so the county can use it as it sees fit. We did put in language that mentions Lock Lane because that's probably, that, that really is the problematic intersection, it's failing now. And so that's the one that would, you know, the county, I think, would like to have addressed. And honestly, when we build it out, we would like to have it improved as well. So when we build out, it's not gonna be a continuing problem for people that will be purchasing homes. The, the details is that we would pay that into fiscal court and that we would do that when we go to record plat with our, with our design, of our plan.
First phase, I guess.
That's right, that's right. First record plat we go, we have to put the, the money up. And also, we will be making that connection for the library at first phase two, that would be the second binding element, yes.
So the second binding element, you showed us the one you wrote, but the second one didn't include that $50,000, so is that what you're talking about?
The, I think, if I understood it, your, your engineer, by the way, was working hard over the weekend, we were getting emails from him yesterday, and I just didn't have a chance to get into my, my, get my staff to change our, our binding elements on our slides. But the $50,000, while it's general, my hope and thought is that it will go to that Lock Lane intersection. The second binding element is that we will make that connection at the library before, when we go to phase one with our development. That'll be the first thing that we do. That'll be on our, you know, our expense, not the county's.
Alright, so we're gonna write these binding, well, one is written, the other one will be written today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and when I get a, if we get some questions, I get a break, I'll, I'll go sit with Ryan and, and hammer it out for him real quick, yes.
Thank you.
Tralby, that, that'll be added as a binding element, you know, as we move into consideration of the docket. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any additional questions from, sir, Mr. Douglas?
That you brought up the $50,000, who, who made that agreement on the $50,000?
We offered that to Jim Solomon, he raised the issue to us. You know, our, our position was that it, on a, on a subdivision, when it's not a rezoning, that provided we meet all the regulations, that we own nothing and you cannot ask money for off-site improvements, the law's pretty clear on that. But we spoke to Mr. Canfield and he wanted to make sure, I mean, again, it's beneficial to our subdivision to have that intersection improved and, but still, $50,000 is a pretty significant contribution to it. And, and one thing to keep in mind is, that intersection's having problems now, it's already a failing intersection. So while our development does add a little bit to that, we're not the cause of that being a failing intersection. So there's lots of reasons why we should not pay anything, but we still are voluntarily doing that.
Putting that on the record.
Alright, any additional questions from commissioners? The additional questions for either the applicant or the folks that spoke or had questions in opposition. Okay, seeing no hands go up, we'll now move into rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant. Mr. Talbot.
I know where I am in the process, so this is my rebuttal, and then I'll still have a closing, is that right?
That is correct.
And will come up after my rebuttal, correct?
It is correct.
Okay, I'll be very brief, he just gave me this language, so I'm gonna read this while I'm on my rebuttal. Applicant shall contribute $50,000 towards off-site road improvements for traffic infrastructure. Oh, that's the one we already have though, Ryan, so that's, what about the new one on the, that we will complete the lot, the road to the library on feet?
Mr. Solomon, I'll get you to come up so we can get it on the record, please, or Ryan, or Mr. Fisher, one of the other.
I was just gonna say, the roadway connection was already in there, I read that earlier in the proposed binding elements, the one that we will add, I've already got written out that I'll read when you have me come up at the very end.
Okay.
Very good, so that one I thought we had to write is already in there, and so we are agreeable to that. And then the one that was in our slide presentation will be added and hopefully you'll make a motion to approve and include that binding element as a part of it. In my rebuttal, I'll, I'll be very brief, we think, just to repeat myself a little bit, this subdivision plan we think is appropriate, we are asking no waivers, no variances, and we were making several significant concessions to improve this, which are over and above what are required. We feel that it should be approved by right and we appreciate your all's consideration. And the one thing, Commissioner Douglas, in terms of that, your questions about the detention basin, just keep in mind, I mean, I know it's obvious, but this is an approval of a preliminary design, and so, you know, the details on that would not be hammered out until you get to construction planning. If we were unable to satisfy that when we went to construction planning, well, we would have a problem and we would not be able to build the subdivision. So just because you're approving today and there might be some lingering doubt, that does not mean we would be able to do that and build that in an inappropriate way, it doesn't meet the standards, so we will do that. Thank you very much for your all's time, and what I didn't say at the beginning is I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, now rebuttal evidence, cross-examination by the opposition, the two gentlemen that spoke, Mr. Eisen and Mr. Millett, do you have any statements that you'd like to make in, in your rebuttal? Okay, alright, with that, we'll now move into the final statement of the opposition. You all have a final statement you'd like to make, either one of you, okay? Alright, and then I doubt, we're down to Mr. Talbot, final statement of the applicant.
I, I think I covered most of it, a couple things I didn't mention in response to, to the two gentlemen, Mr. Eisen and Mr. Millett that came up. On, Mr. Eisen, hopefully with, with regards to the detention basin, we will be coming back for that on a new application, that will include that very tiny rezoning that we need to do. And, Mr. Eisen, thank you very much for acknowledging that we have been working with him, and it is our expectation when we come back, it'll be with the approval and agreement for him. With Mr. Millett, in regards to his request that we eliminate those four lots, we're not able to do that. Those lots are appropriate for that area, and if you look at the plan, not only are they appropriate size, but there's also open space buffering that's behind all four of those lots. And again, that is not required when it's residential to residential, so we think that's appropriate. And that is all I have, and again, thank you all very much for your all's time.
Okay, thank you. Alright, with that, docket, the right docket here, PZ 22024 is now closed, and I would like to call on, I guess, Mr. Fisher to outline what's being requested at this point in the application or in the process.
Alright, give me a second to go back here to my presentation, I'll pull these up so everybody can see what we have in there already. So the binding elements for Paramount Estates preliminary subdivision plan, approval applies only to the plan presented at the December 19th, 2022 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. Maybe I'll do that for you, sorry. Subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. Cumulative phasing plan shall limit the number of dwelling units to 35 per year, beginning with the first record plat. Phase one of the development shall include roadway connection to the intersection at US 42 and Kentucky 1793. The preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of construction plan, plan approval. And then the other one that we have added in today, based off the applicant, applicant shall contribute $50,000 towards off-site road improvements for traffic infrastructure impacted by the development, including Lock Lane, which shall be payable to the Oldham County Fiscal Court and due at the time of record plat.
Okay, alright, Mr. Solomon, anything that you need to add to this? Okay, commissioners, you've heard what's being, had been outlined here on the requirement on this development plan, docket PZ 22024, I'll now open it up for consideration of a motion. I'm sorry, Ms. Davis?
I'll make a motion that we approve the PZ 2224 because it meets all the plans and the zoning specifications, and it's to include the proposed binding elements.
Okay, Mr. Carter, is that an adequate motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Okay, Ms. Nasser, seconds? Okay, now, any discussion on the motion to approve docket PZ 22024 with the attached binding elements? Any discussion? Okay, seeing no hands go up, well, I'll ask Ms. Egger, if she would, to take the vote, and this is a vote on docket PZ 22024, motion to approve with the attached binding elements on the, filed by Canfield Realty Group for approval of a preliminary subdivision plan, 155 lots to be known as Paramount Estates, and the property's located on 150.11 acres in the 1200, 12, 300 block of West Highway 42 Prospect, the current zoning is R1 residential and CO conservation residential. So this is a motion to approve. Go ahead, Ms. Egger.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Ender.
Yes.
Mr. Falvey.
Yes.
Mr. Finney.
Yes.
Mr. Hafling.
Yes.
Ms. Leighton.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Klingefus.
Yes.
Ms. Nasser. Yes. Ms. Wizer. Wazer.
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Marsh.
Alright, motion to approve docket PZ 22024 has been approved on a vote of, was it 14? 14 to zero. Alrighty, thank you all. And commissioners, before, we have one other doctored item. Oh, okay, okay, I have one, one more doctored item before we move into elections, but appreciate everybody coming today. Alright, Ms. Alby, you say you have something that you'd like to, oh, okay, okay, alright, okay, thank you all. Folks, we do have one other item to do, so if you could step out in the hall, that would be helpful. There you go. Yeah, there you go. Folks, before we move into their, our last official, my last official business, I have a letter that I would like to read to the Planning Commission, and I addressed it to Judge David Vogel, and it says, "I'm writing today to inform you that I am resigning my appointment to the Oldham County Planning Commission effective at the end of the day on December 19th, 2022. It has been a true honor to serve on the Planning Commission for the past 25 years. I'm stepping down from my position as Planning Commission Chairman as a result of being elected as District Four Magistrate in Oldham County, and I will take my seat, I guess, January 2nd. I would like to thank you and the Oldham County Fiscal Court for allowing me the opportunity to serve our great community over these many years. I would also like to thank Jim Urban and all the great staff that I've had the privilege to work with, including Greg King, who has served as Vice Chair of the Commission. I also want to thank John Carter for his many years of service as our Planning Commission Attorney, as he retires as Oldham County Attorney, I guess, come January. Thanks to all the Planning Commissioners that I've had the privilege to serve with over these years. It's been a true honor to serve with these great community leaders." So I just wanted to read that into the record, and, and I think, Ms. Alby, you have something to do to add, okay?
I wasn't sure when you were gonna talk and stuff, so I wanted to just get up and say a little bit about Kevin. I, I've known Kevin my entire life, I can remember as a little girl on our farm and stuff, he and his dad would come and deliver corn, and I would beg my mom, "Please let me ride with Raymond in the big truck." So a lot of times I'd ride with Raymond in the big truck and ride back with Kevin in another truck and stuff. Those were the days when Oldham County still had a large farming community and, and LaGrange, we had no stoplights back then, and my, my, how things have changed. Kevin, you've been instrumental in so many projects between the Planning Commission, Seoul Conservation, working with the Board of Education on projects and, and other organizations throughout the state, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. And thank you specifically for your time and commitment on the Planning Commission. You began serving on the Commission, I did a little research, October 17th, 1996 is what we have on our records. So that is, I'm a numbers person, that's 9,559 days, or 314 months, 1,365 weeks, and that sums up to a fabulous 26 years and two months and two days. That's a lot of Planning Commission meetings, Growth Management Task Force, study review committees, and the phone calls you would get from me, say, "Kevin, I think we need to talk." So you would, you would come in for those. Oldham County's so lucky to have you as your upcoming fourth district magistrate, I know you continue to do great things in Oldham County in the years to come. I wish you well, look forward to working with you on fiscal court, best of luck.
Thank you, Ms. Alby, sure appreciate it, so thank you, appreciate that. Thank you all very much, it's just, it has been truly an honor to serve, I thought I'd served 25 years, but I'm not a numbers person like Amy is, so-
When you get our interest.
That's right, exactly, so, but it has, I've truly thoroughly enjoyed this, this whole process, and, and I'm, you know, I'm proud of where Oldham County is today, and you know, we've, we've had some, you know, contentious hearings over the years, and I think, but, you know, I, I feel like that we've got a, a great commission here, and I look forward to continuing to work, you know, with the commission as a, in my new role as, as a magistrate coming up in January, and, and so it just, you know, I feel honored to, to have been able to work with, with all these folks, and, and over the past, you know, 26 years or whatever, it's been a lot of folks that's come through the Planning Commission, so, as, as commissioners. So anyway, thank you all, and with that, I guess my last official duty is, will be election of officers, and at this point, I would like to open up for nominations for chairman. There you go. Mr. Hafling.
Nominate Greg King as chairman of the Oldham County Planning Commission.
Okay, alright, do we have any additional nominations? Okay, okay, seeing none, Mr. Hampton?
I just have a second.
Okay, alright, you have a second? Alright, any further nominations? Okay, with that, all those in favor of electing Greg King as new chairman of the Oldham County Planning Commission on December 19th, 2022, signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Mr. King.
One more thank you to Mr. Jeffries, thank you so much for all your years of service. At this time, we'll open up the floor for nominations for vice chair, Mr. Hafling.
My name, Katie Nasser, is a vice chair of the Oldham County Planning Commission.
We have nomination for Katie Nasser, do I have a second? Mr. Finney, I'll take that. Anyone else? Anyone else? Alright, so, all those in favor of appointing Katie Nasser Vice Chair of Oldham County Planning and Zoning this date, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Nasser, welcome aboard. Thank you for your service. Mr. Fisher?
Wanted to let you all know, so the next meeting, January 24th, in the new year, there will be something already on the docket, so plan on being here then, and then just in case you haven't read the email, there will be some food and orange juice and good stuff for breakfast over in the conference room, so feel free to join us and wish Mr. Jeffries and Mr. Carter nice farewell.
Mr. Hampton.
I just want to recognize Mr. Carter fully, we're all here.
We appreciate your years, we're gonna miss you.
No speeches.
Alright, anything further, guys? I wish all a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, alright? Best behavior, please, all of you, be safe. And with that, I believe, unless anyone else has anything to add, we will be adjourned.